Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, November 3rd, 2025 Board of Currituck County Commissioners to Order. At 5:30, we had a work session discussing electoral districts. And at this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Adam Taylor from Palace Point Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let's pray together. Almighty God, who we know is the giver of all good things, we thank you for the natural majesty and beauty of this land. They restore us, though we often destroy them. Father, we ask that you heal us and heal this land. We thank you, God, for the great resources of this nation. They make us rich, though we often exploit them. Father, we ask for your forgiveness. We thank you, God, for the men and women who have made this country, this state, and this county strong. They are models for us, though we often fall short of their example and ideals. Father, we ask for you to inspire us to act in a way of service to and for the good of others. We thank you, God, for the torch of liberty which has been lit in this land. It has drawn people from every nation, though we have often hidden from its light. Lord, we ask for you to enlighten us to the magnitude of our freedoms and blessings you have bestowed on this land and its people. We thank you, Lord, for the faith we have inherited and all the riches found in belief in Jesus Christ. It sustains our life, though we have been faithless again and again. Lord, will you please renew us in our faith and belief? Help us, oh Lord, to finish the good work begun here. Strengthen our efforts to blot out ignorance and prejudice and to abolish poverty and crime, and hasten the day when all our people with many voices in one united chorus will glorify your name. Almighty God and our heavenly Father, send down upon these who hold office as county commissioner in Currituck County, North Carolina, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
If you will, join me in our pledge to our nation's flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
All right. At this time, we're going to item two is the oath of office for Troy D. Brethwaite, Moayak District 5 temporary appointment. The oath will be administered by Ray Matusko, Clerk of Superior Court. Before he gets going, it's nice to have you joining the board, and we look forward to your wisdom and comment and leadership.
Well, thank you. I'm very happy to be here. I'm very honored to be here. And I first want to say I want to wish Commissioner Etheridge a speedy recovery. As I mentioned in my interview comments last week, I've been in Moayak almost 30 years, and I've known Commissioner Etheridge almost that entire time. And I wish him the best and speedy recovery. And I want to make sure that I'm here to represent District 5 and his constituents to the best of my ability and to make wise decisions for Moayak District 5 and Currituck County as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go get sworn in.
Before I administer the oath, I wanted to take a minute and thank the Board of Commissioners for inviting me out. It's always an honor to be asked to come administer the oath of office. And also wanted to thank the county manager and the Board of Commissioners for the capital improvements that have been made at the courthouse and the clerk's office. It looks really nice. It was long overdue, but it's very much appreciated. And I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Matusko, it's always a pleasure to have you over here than being over there to see you.
That's not going to get you out of jury duty.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brethwaite, if you'd like to have your wife come up and you have her read the Bible. You want to introduce her. This is my wife, Tony Brethley.
Hi.
So, if you're over here, and if Tony will hold the Bible, basically, you put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. All right?
Hold on. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all. We're good. Do good. Do good.
Do you, Troy D. Brethwaite, solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are maybe established for the governance thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I do.
And do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office as a member of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, and according to law, so help you, God?
I do.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Troy, we're going to take a short recess. Call the meeting back to order and move to item three. If our county attorney would read the ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
In the consent agenda, letter C, I mean, my company's maintained that HOA for seven years, but I mean, the roads being turned over is not going to. I just wanted to. I do work in there, so.
That's fine.
I don't think that's a conflict. Hearing none. For the approval of the agenda, we have one item we need to add to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to add to new business the following: extension of memorandum of understanding term between the county and Pasquotank County for the acceptance of stray dogs.
And that would be item number 13?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it would be item 12, and the consent agenda would be 13.
Okay. Okay, so it'd be 11A.
Yes.
11A is senior citizen.
It would be item 12, and consent agenda would be 13.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Item 12, consent agenda is moved to item 13.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. A second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is, I believe, we have public comment. I don't have anyone that has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none. We're going to move to administrative reports tonight. We're very happy to say that we have our superintendent, Dr. Matt Lutes, to give us a Currituck County performance review. I believe we've got some good reviews at the school, and he wants to share it with the community.
On live TV.
This has not always been a joyous moment to come before you all. It's just not. But today, it is. I've got a new board here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Renee and I are going to just present some data to you. I wanted to share the 24-25 student data. This has been a journey that began with our strategic plan. I know you're getting ready to embark on your own. We also created a curricular strategic plan behind the overall district strategic plan, and that's what guides our work on a day-to-day basis with what we do in our schools in terms of curriculum and making sure all kids get great access. Most importantly, the data that I'm about to share with you, it didn't happen by accident. It's happened with a sustainable plan. And a big part of that sustainability is the support that we receive from you. We could. The state of North Carolina is the primary funder of schools, but it's the local dollar that ultimately makes the difference. And we receive very little in federal dollars. We're always bottom five out of 115 in the states, and it falls upon you as county commissioners and our local tax dollar to support our schools. And so, we're very excited to share this. And again, we thank you for the support that you give our schools. Renee's going to give an overview of how the state creates local report cards, so you know what you're looking at. And I'll be diving into the year's accomplishments after that. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. We hope.
Ms. Dowdy, tell everybody who you are in case they're watching at home and don't know.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. As Matt said, I am Renee Dowdy, Assistant Superintendent for Currituck County Schools. And we are excited, truly, to stand before you today and share some of the great results that we received of the 24-25 school year data. I think Ms. Debs is going to switch you over to our brief little PowerPoint.
We're there.
Hopefully. You're there? Okay, good. It's not here. Oh, there we go. Now I got it. Perfect. So, first, just like you as parents, if you happen to be parents and you get school report cards, in 2013, North Carolina began issuing school report card grades to every school across the state of North Carolina with letter grades A through F. And then behind that A through F, you've got more details about what it took to score that letter grade on that report card. So, what we're going to do is take a little bit of a brief moment to explain what goes behind those report card grades. So, this is just a cheat sheet of all the testing that takes place for students in the state of North Carolina from grades 3 through 12. So, a little chart there, just a little rundown about all the different tests that students take. And then those performance assessments are measured in different categories. One, an NP. So, when students get test scores back, they either earn an NP, not proficient, meaning they didn't demonstrate enough mastery of the content. Achievement level 3, which is a basic understanding, which is grade level proficiency. Achievement level 4 or 5, which goes through a thorough or a comprehensive understanding of the content. And school performance indicators look different for a K-5 school, for a middle school, and then for your secondary or high schools. And so, this just breaks down. When we look at that school report card grade of an A, B, C, D, E, or F, 80% of that grade comes from our school performance on those end-of-grade or end-of-course tests. The other 20% of that grade is made up of growth. So, for example, a student may not score a level 3, 4, or 5. They may be non-proficient, but still show growth from one year to the next. I tend to use a lot of examples personally. For those that know me, who, you know, I've been here quite a while. I have two children. I have one who's an exceptional child, means he has learning difficulties. And then I have an AIG daughter. And so, for one of my kiddos, it's nearly impossible for him to pass the end-of-course test any year because he's got developmental disabilities, right? But he still is required to take those tests. So, while he may not pass the test, he can still impact our growth factor because from one year to the next, he can show growth. So, the state of North Carolina said it shouldn't just be about can you pass the test, but can you grow from one year to the next. So, while that 20% is a very nominal piece of the letter grade, it's still a very important factor because it really does capture all students, in my opinion. So, these are the achievement score indicators. You'll see all the EOG tests. I like to hit a little bit about high school because that's where my background is, because it looks very different for high schools and what their school report card grade factors. It's not just about testing. It is about testing, but it's also about four- and five-year cohort graduation rate. It's about students that take the work keys examinations, which are our CTE concentrators. And I know for a lot of folks at home, I'm probably speaking language that they have no clue about, but that's for kids who finish a trade program, our CTE Career and Technical Education Program, at at least a level 2, and score a silver or better on the work keys, which is a workplace readiness exam. So, you'll notice a lot of difference between high school indicators versus elementary and middle school. But again, that letter grade of A through F is 80% on our performance composite, meaning how well do our students score on their EOGs and EOCs or other tests in there. And then the other 20% is that growth factor. Are students growing from one year to the next? So, Matt's going to come up now and share a little bit about what our historical datas look like and the great things that happened this past year.
All right. So, we put together a chart from '21, '22 through this past year. I'm going to take you down to the chart on the bottom, and you. We did all the comparative data, and almost in every area, we're trending up. Everything from '21, '22, but also almost over year, over year, school by school, we're showing a lot of improvement. Where we have some fall-offs as well, we know exactly why that is, and I think knowing the why is just as important as any amount of data. If you know why you got there, if you had a drop or you had a significant gain, what did you do differently? This is how we compared to the rest of the state. We outperformed the state average on 21 out of 21 for the past two years. We were above the state rankings. We were nine out of 21, were 10 points or greater. This is what we expect. It's taken time to get there, but those are fairly significant numbers. Anything when you get a plus 5 or greater, it tends to be statistically significant. This is the region. There are 19 schools in the Northeast Region, school districts. We are number 2. That's a bump up from a year ago. When we look at this data, this is really where we first look. We look at the comparative neighbors, and we know we should be achieving well in this region. So, we're very pleased where we are there. This is across the state. You'll see that we were number 9 in the state. When we shared this with our principals this year, and we went through things, a year ago, we finished 12. We had a big cake. We had a huge celebration. It was a big jump, and I'm going to share how we move forward. I will tell you, this year, when we shared that we were 9, I had a hungry group of people in the room that wanted to be better, and you can feel it in our buildings.
Dr. Lutes, can you go back one? What jumps out at me is Camden and Dare. We're sandwiched right between them geographically. And also, with the amount of money we give to the schools as well, Dare County is like way up in the state with the amount of money. They're first in the state, and we outperformed them. Camden County does not give as much, and they outperformed us all. So, my point is, is you guys are doing a good job with the money that you're getting to bring these scores up. But it's not all about money. It's about people and your teachers. That's where I'm going with this. People think it's money, 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 but it's your people that you have, and you have some good people.
We completely agree with you. We believe in boots on the ground. We have a tiny central office compared to district our size, and we're proud of that. I have great district leadership, good building leadership, and most importantly, we have great teachers, TAs, and we align our supports directly to student learning. If it. I don't need more people pushing paper in the office. We need people in the buildings helping kids learn how to read. And we've taken the resources. And we say resources are people and money. Teacher assistants that help our kids learn how to read better at a higher level. And we saw gains across grades 4 and 5 last year, significant gains. Those are hard to get, but we strategically placed our teacher assistants, thanks to the support from this board, to help kids close that gap with reading, get them to read at grade level, because once you teach a kid to read, they can change their whole lives. This is in the college career rating. This is level 4 and above. This was an area that we concentrated on last year. As you're getting higher scores, that means moving above the 3. We outperformed the state in 19 out of 21 areas, but this is an area that we continue to focus on. In the region, we're just a smidge behind Camden and Dare, level 4 and above. And at the state level, we're 15. But overall, passing-wise, when you take all the tests, we were number 9 and number 2 in the region.
Could you go back to that previous slide, and what's represented in the third column?
That's the district number. We're District 270.
Is this a PowerPoint that we can get?
Yes.
We already have it.
We already have?
Yeah, Debbie's got it.
Debbie's got it.
I mean, she emailed it to us.
We sent it over like 5 o'clock today.
Okay. Oh, shit. Okay, I didn't check the email since 5.
Forgot.
That's all good.
It was late, but we got it.
Okay.
Disregard my comment, then.
Someone else. We thought someone else fed the dog.
And you said it was 115 total districts. So, we're ninth out of 115.
Correct.
Not just 100 counties, 115 districts.
Correct.
Thank you.
No problem. This is another highlight. If you. I think I'm going to. We're number 10 in the state graduation rate. If you pull down to the four-year graduation rate at the bottom, you can see the concentrated effort there to improve things for our kids.
And number 1 in the region.
Yes.
So, 10 in the state, 1 in the region.
Proquemis is ahead of us in the region, so we're 2. Proquemis has us there.
I miss them.
Got to give them a bang.
I think of all the slides I share, I think this is the one we're probably most proud of because when you know why things are occurring, and again, I keep saying not by accident, you don't go from 31 to 19 to 12 to 9. Because remember, all things are equal. We all started in '21, '22, back to school after the nightmare COVID. And you can see our continuous progression of improvement across the state. And you can look at some of those highlights this past year with our 5th grade being top 5 in the state, and grade 7 and 8, again, really performing well, and our high school making a huge jump from 27 to 11. So, and again, you can see the upward trend. It takes time to get there. People want results quickly, but that doesn't happen. It takes a long time to implement a plan and then build sustainability to make sure that that plan comes into action. And a lot of tough decisions, a lot of excitement around these scores. I know our teachers are proud of their work. I do also want to highlight that we have several of our title schools. Title schools are impoverished schools. They have more than 35% free and reduced population in those schools. We have a couple buildings that are upwards of 60%. Those buildings were Bs. And getting a B is no small accomplishment in this state. There's less than 2%, I believe. But I'll make it safe since I'm on camera. Less than 5% of title schools in the state that are elementary schools received a B. So, we've got great teachers and teacher assistants and principals doing wonderful work from the ground up. When you build your foundation, and we've said this repeatedly, if you put the good footer in, then you can build the rest of the house. And so, we're starting to see those results move to the middle school, and we believe we're going to see those results at the high school as well. So, again, I thank this board for your support. We could not be accomplishing what we do without the dollars that you send our way. And we are very. Renee and I are very proud to come and present to you what we, what we as a district accomplished this past year. So, thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have questions?
I'd just like to say, I know how hard you have worked, Dr. Lutes, and Renee as well, and starting back around COVID, when you came up with the strategic plan, and you've surrounded yourself with outstanding curriculum leaders. And we've always had excellent teachers and hardworking teachers and assistants. And he has worked very hard to get our school system where it is. And I just want to say thank you.
I've had wonderful support from our boards of education, which is, we have some sustainability here. Let's just be. I'm going to be realistic here. I'm in my sixth year, and it's been a long time since the superintendent was here. And it's not as if we haven't had rocky, bumpy roads along the way. But I've had boards that have supported the work that we have, what we've done. And we've had commissioner support along the way as well. We were able to implement some pretty robust programs to get some things off the ground to get work done. So, thank you, Ms. Rose.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say too, I mean, they do a good job. They're a good group to work with as well, too. So, keep up the good work. It's, obviously, the results are proof in the pudding. So, good job.
It's a collective group.
Not a question for you, but county manager, is this a report or something we can get into the next county newsletter or the paper?
Focus.
Yeah.
Focus.
Focus, excuse me.
Yes.
Just because I know our public, you know, these are numbers to brag on and let our, make sure all of our citizens are aware of this because that's astounding. Those are the great numbers, and it just shows the effort and what the schools are doing. And I think, you know, we need to make sure we make.
Because they can share that on social media, because not everything on social media is true.
Let people know because they need to know how great school systems do in Currituck. Anyways, but these are great.
Good schools equal good tax bases, with a healthy community.
Hey, Dr. Lutes, on this slide right here, what do the asterisks represent beside the current year's rankings or last year's rankings?
Top 10 in the state.
Okay.
In that particular area.
Dr. Lutes, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. And thank, thanks to all the teachers and the support staff and teachers assistants. It's a tough job that they've done. They've done great things since the end of COVID and enduring that. And I think it's a testament to your leadership. So, thank you.
Make sure, pass along. There's one other piece, and I think it's not just. It is everything. When you go into our buildings now, and I think Kevin, you're in our buildings probably more than anyone here. They are clean, and they are put together. You are too, Tony. Well, he's naturally in there. He gets drawn in, fill in. But they are clean, and they are well-kept. We are proud of those buildings. So, when a student walks in, that's what they walk into every day. It's clean on the outside and inside. And you have supported the transformation of the shell of our buildings with new roofs and new exteriors and new windows and making sure. And then our custodians make sure that things are clean. And it begins at the most basic level, and then it replicates and moves forward.
I will say Griggs Elementary School cafeteria looks the same as I attended it back in the early 70s. Good job.
The band room's different because it's at a different school.
And the auditorium seats still the same, the wood ones.
They're original.
Original. Good job.
So, Dr. Lutes and Ms. Dowdy, we appreciate you coming and bringing us good news. And I'm sure the county will be glad to hear that. And so, for number 10, you've got to really work hard to get above that. 9. Now, I was reading 10 down here at the bottom, graduation rate. So.
Which is very good.
Yeah. So, you've got a lot of hard work to keep moving up that ladder, but I know you're up for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
All right. With that, I'm going to move into new business. We have a resolution opposing the division of Marine Fisheries' proposed limits on blue crab landings. Y'all have read that resolution. And Ms. Rose has a very solid and long background in commercial fishing, and she's also our representative on the 18-county board. So, I'm going to ask her if she has any comments or anything she'd like to add.
Well, actually, the coalition is meeting Wednesday in Morehead City. And what they're proposing with blue crabs, they did a stock assessment. The stock assessment did not pass peer review. So, they really don't have to make any decisions to cut the crab, what the fishermen are doing with crabs. However, they feel that they've seen triggers. They being Marine Fisheries, Marine Fisheries Commission. And they want to cut our area of crabbers to 30 bushels a day, September to December. And you may think 30 bushels is good, but in the fall, the price of crabs drops quite a bit. And I talked to one crabber this week. They had 40 bushels. So, that's a 25% cut. So, the Marine Fisheries Commission does have the option of saying. So the Marine Fisheries Commission does have the option of saying, we're gonna wait until the twenty-sixth stock assessment and see if it passes peer review, because it's, it's not, it's not necessarily the fishermen that's the problem. You know, they all agree, including Division of Marine Fisheries, that weather plays into it, things run in cycles, and water pollution plays into it. But they can't control the weather. They can't control the water pollution at Marine Fisheries. So they tend to want to put it all on the backs of the commercial fishermen, which is really sad. But their next meeting, the Marine Fisheries Commission, is in Wrightsville Beach. I believe it's November the fourteenth and fifteenth. So a decision will be made at that time.
So when I talked with some of the commercial fishermen with Ms. Rose, one of the things that they brought up was water quality, was pollution. So my question is, maybe it's for the coalition, maybe it's for the county manager, what kind of monitoring is being done in Currituck Sound to see what the water quality is? You can say all you want to say, but if you don't have data, because they control pollution through Kama at the coast. But what they're not doing is controlling the pollution that's coming upstream and then coming down to us. So you have municipalities that can dump sewage into the rivers or whatever. And they just get a little slap on the wrist, but then it comes down here and affects us. But they put the hammer down on the coastal communities because that's where Kama is. And there's nothing looking at the source of the pollution. And, and we have plenty around here from runoff from subdivisions and drainage and so forth. But there, there really needs to be some discussion about water quality.
I agree.
Now, I know the Army Corps of Engineers, the Duck Research Pier had buoys out there. And recently, they were doing studies on the sounds, because I talked to them about it. And I can't remember if one of them was pollution, but they had buoys, they had buoys out there and they're actively monitoring the sound.
A lot of times what they're monitoring is the salinity.
Well, that and some other factors, but I don't know if they can add.
And oxygen and so forth.
I don't know if they can add something to a sensor or something to.
So I guess if we could ask the county manager to investigate that and maybe, Ms. Rose, you could make that one of the agenda items for discussion at some point in the meeting. There's, there's more to the issue than just overfishing. That's all they talk about is overfishing. But there's other things that are adding to the problem.
Do, do we know why the studies, why, why did it fail peer review?
They didn't agree. I guess the two, the two people analyzing didn't agree.
So what did the other study say?
When they, when they read the stock assessment. I, I have not read the whole stock assessment.
So, I mean, like, when something fails peer review, that's kind of a.
It's a red flag.
Yes, it is.
Here's my assessment. I give it, I give it to, you know, Commissioner O'Neill here and he says, eh, I don't really agree with that.
Yeah.
So, you know, to, it's not uncommon for governments to not disregard things that don't pass peer review, but, you know.
Well, they're gonna make some, they're trying to make changes even though it, it, it has concerns. The stock assessment data has concerns.
Trust the science. Until the science doesn't back me up, then don't trust the science.
Correct. All right, so if the manager would check on, find out if there's any data being gathered from the sound and what we could do to get some. And then Ms. Rose can discuss it with the coalition. So we need a resolution for approval?
Did, did we want to read it or not? Or does it matter? I don't know if we, I don't know if we ever, did we read it?
Oh.
Read it?
Gonna read it. Just so the public can hear what it says, I guess.
To it, goodness. Whereas Currituck County relies on the commercial fishing industry to provide jobs and promote local spending, both of which contribute to the health of Currituck County's economy. And whereas blue crab is considered one of the largest and most valuable fisheries in North Carolina and is the number one species harvested in both the Currituck Sound and the Albemarle Sound. And whereas the Division of Marine Fisheries has proposed a blue crab landing recommendation for a ten-bushel trip limit for mature females from June to December and no harvest of mature females January to May, with all other blue crab management measures remaining in place, that has changed. So we are gonna need to amend this. They're not recommending that anymore. They're recommending that our area be limited to a thirty-bushel limit from September to December, and they're going to put an end to crab trawling.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, that's for our area. Now.
When they say our area, wha, what do we?
Currituck and Albemarle Sound. It's like north of this bridge they refer to as fifty-eight. So we're gonna have to change that paragraph. And I'll get you the correct. Whereas the proposed regulations would impose a twenty-one point seven percent decrease in landings as measured by the twenty-nineteen, twenty-three average landings, detrimentally impacting the livelihoods of our local watermen and economy of Currituck County and neighboring counties that rely on the fishing industry. And whereas the North Carolina Sea Grant found that North Carolina's wild and farmed shellfish industry contributed thirty-one point seven million to the state's economy in twenty-two alone. And whereas these proposed regulations would irreparably harm the state seafood industry and ultimately northeastern North Carolina's overall economy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners hereby opposes the proposed regulations by the Division of Marine Fisheries, as these regulations would have severe negative impacts on the livelihoods of local watermen and the economies of Currituck County and our neighboring communities that depend on the commercial fishing industry. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners will forward this resolution to Currituck County's representatives in the North Carolina General Assembly and the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, and encourages the public to stand with the working watermen and voice their opposition to these proposed changes. And as far as the change I'm talking about, I did call the director of Marine Fisheries Friday, Kathy Rawls. And that's the first I heard of, of changing that. So that's why ours is not updated. But I did speak with her. I spoke with the chairman of the Marine Fisheries Commission.
So it's even more restrictive what they're proposing?
It is for us, really.
Yeah. So what I would recommend is since time is of the essence, that we go ahead and adopt this resolution and then have staff add the correct paragraph into it as Ms. Rose has read.
And I can, I can certainly help with that after talking with.
We need to be ready for Wednesday when you get out.
That's right.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution with the updated numbers and regulations that the Division of Marine Fisheries is proposing.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The next agenda items are, we have some ordinance amendments around some different things. We had the first reading at our last meeting. And it requires unanimous vote of all members for it to go through with the first reading. But since we didn't have a full board, we have to do it again. I've asked the county attorney if she would read the ordinances to meet the letter of the law, and then we would adopt them all in one motion.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will just summarize each of these ordinances. Like you indicated, they were before you at the last meeting, and this is just a second reading. And so I'll just go through each one and then you can make that one motion, unless you want to take any of them out and discuss. So the first ordinance amendment is regarding meter tampering. By law, the county is not authorized to add an extra fee if somebody tampers with a water meter. The reason for that is because that has been codified in the criminal statutes. And that would be our remedy, is to go through and charge someone criminally for that. And then we could seek restitution for any kind of loss that's associated with meter tampering. So we just removed that additional fine. The next ordinance is to amend the Animal Services and Control Advisory Board. This amendment removes the experience and professional board member requirements and, and just allows any citizen to be on that board in addition to, I believe it's the Animal Services Director and an animal control officer and a board member. And also clarifies that they will be compensated unless a county employee and appointed by consensus. The next ordinance amends the Fire and EMS Advisory Board to, first of all, be the Fire Advisory Board. It revises the member compensation specifically to the chiefs of volunteer fire departments or their assistant chiefs or deputy chiefs. And it also clarifies the compensation for those members. And each time I say clarifies compensation, I mean that each member that's not a county employee receives fifty dollars per meeting that they attend. And also that, let's see, the Fire Advisory Board meets quarterly. The next ordinance amendment is to reduce the number of terms from four to two years for the Historic Preservation Commission. And the next ordinance is to reduce the amount of members to the Ocean Sands North Crown Point Service District Advisory. Currently, it's seven members, reducing it to five and clarifying that they will also be compensated per meeting. The next amendment is for the opioid advisory board, decreasing the number of members from seven to five, changing the appointment to consensus, and then compensating the members for those meetings. The next ordinance is for the tourism advisory board, clarifying that compensation for members who attend each meeting, again, for non-county employees. And then the final ordinance has created the Carova Beach Road Service District Advisory Board, or didn't create it. That's been in existence, but it was by resolution. And this is codifying that advisory board in the code of ordinances. So those are the ordinance amendments. And in order to pass tonight, it just needs a majority vote.
All right. Does anyone have any questions to the county attorney or the manager? I have one. I don't know if it's a question or a directive, but I would like to see the Fire Advisory Board be advised tomorrow and go ahead and schedule a meeting and get them to work, unless anyone objects.
Second.
Yeah.
And with that, we need a, a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept all of the amendment, the amendments and changes to the ordinances that we have just been summarized, that have just been summarized.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is new position and job description for library director.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I shared some information with you earlier this week about the creation of this position. As you're aware, we are currently members of the East Albemarle Regional Library System along with Dare, Camden, and Pasquotank Counties. Earl is dissolving effective June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six. And the county will assume all responsibility for the library system, which means that the county librarian would become a county-funded position rather than a position that is funded by Earl. So recently, the librarian resigned. And I am recommending that we go ahead and create the position and advertise the position so that we are able to hire the county librarian prior to that transition.
And this is for just the, um, the barco?
This covers all, all three branches.
Who selected, I mean, just, and not, not taking anything by any mean, shape, or force. Nobody works there, so I'm not, nobody's in that position now. So I'm not taking anything from anybody's position. But who selected the base grade? Because if you look at the different pay scale plan, I'm looking at it now, like, the library, and I'm not knocking the library, but the library is above your airport director, it's above fire captains, sheriff captains, tourism director. I mean, where, where, who chose the, the pay? Or where that fell in the, the pay grade on the, the thing, is where I have the question.
So we consulted with the, the salary study consultant to help determine where that salary should be placed on the pay scale.
So I was just, I mean, like, I could, I mean.
That is a lot.
That's a lot. I mean, like, they're ahead of the, the register of deeds. They're ahead of the chief building inspector. I mean, that's.
The airport director and the tourism director, I know the amount of work they put in.
Like I said, it's nothing to knock that position for its pay.
Well, the alternative would be to throw the science out that we've used for every other person in the county and not use for this position.
I don't even want to get on the pay study.
So, so we're, remember that we're not, we're not comparing the positions to other positions within the grade. We're comparing the position to the market, which is our comparable counties. Our comparable jurisdictions. This position does require a master's degree.
Are we requiring that, or is the state making us require that?
It, it is required to receive state aid, which we'll be applying for the state aid from the state library system.
Will they work weekends, holidays, or will they be typically the county business? I, I'm just saying that because I know our airport, I'm using that as example. Our airport director comes out, he came out on Christmas this year. Came out on, I mean, I mean, is that position to classify that pay grade above those people? Is that position gonna work weekends, holidays?
They are open on Saturday.
They are open on Saturday.
Libraries open on Saturday.
Director of Fire does that too. He works weekends, I think.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the only reason why I brought it up. I mean, it's not a dig at that.
I have a, our current library director is paid out of the East Albemarle Regional Library.
That's correct.
So my understanding, those funds are gonna be transferred to Currituck. So this is not a.
There, there will be a budget amendment that will accompany, once the position is hired, we will have to do a budget amendment. So yes, they will fund up to the salary and benefits that are funded through Earl. And then anything above and beyond that, the county will be responsible for funding.
What is the current salary for, right now, under Earl?
Um, just bear with me for one second.
And you're, you're saying that those funds will be transferred. Will they, will that just be a one-time thing this year? And Earl's going away, so next year it will be total county money?
That's correct. And then we will apply for the state aid, so that we will.
It's a leftover money that's gonna transfer in, yes.
And the state will give the money direct to us instead of to the Eastern Albemarle Regional Library?
Correct.
As long as we have a person with a master's degree.
Yeah, as long as we meet the requirements.
Meet the requirements.
Do we know how much the state is contributing?
That's a good question.
I, I don't have that in front of me. I want to say, uh, I don't want to give you the wrong number. I can, I can get that for you.
When does this position need to be filled?
Well, so the director resigned and the position is currently vacant. The assistant manager is going to serve as the interim director until we're able to hire someone.
Our assistant manager?
Yes.
Multi-talented.
Yeah.
We'll get you a hat rack for Christmas.
There you go.
Okay.
What, what is the current pay?
She doesn't.
That Earl.
So the current, I don't know if I have the total. They're, they're, I'm sorry, I do have it. Sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five, three hundred and fifty.
And this, this is gonna start at eighty?
Eighty-five.
No, eighty-one, seven, eighty-nine.
Oh, right, right.
Supplement this year?
There was.
So that's a, it was a one-time deal, so that ten thousand got, so ultimately, it was seventy-four thousand.
Okay.
But that's not a recurring, that was a, a grant.
Just a one-time deal, so.
I, I, I think it's a lot.
I think it's up too, I think it's up too high on the pay grade. That's just my two cents. And it's nothing against the position. And nobody's working there now, so it's not like I'm trying to insult that, that individual. But I mean, like, I can list ten to fifteen jobs that, coming out on the weekends, coming out at nighttime and doing all the other stuff. There's the libraries, you know, if the alarm goes off in there, she's probably not responding. It's gonna be.
Why wasn't Earl?
Or he, whoever it is.
Well, why wasn't the Earl program paying at that level already then? And now when they're dissolving, now it's jumping up to.
So the, the Earl system had designated out of the four branches, one librarian. It's currently the Pasquotank County Librarian who's serving as sort of the, the librarian for the system. So.
And if you hire someone that, say, has fifteen, twenty years' experience, they would possibly start in the middle of this. Is that, no?
That's not correct. No, they would start at the minimum.
At the minimum. Okay. I thought you said that you had that. I thought you said that you had that authority where you could place people with their experience.
That, that is true, but that, not in this situation, that wouldn't be the case.
Oh, it would be based on the experience.
She said no.
She wouldn't, yeah, she would do, whoever, whatever their resume is, they're starting at that salary.
But she has the authority to do so.
All right, so, the bottom line is, is the manager has brought forth a request to hire a librarian. The board has questions about the starting salary. The Board of Commissioners will, whatever the motion is, will set the starting salary. So if you follow the manager's recommendation, the starting salary is eighty-one, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. If the board makes a motion for a different salary, then that would be the starting salary, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, one way or the other, we need to move this forward because we have a position that's open, that needs to be filled, and the manager needs to get about advertising for the position.
Right.
I have a question, just to put it in perspective, and looking at the information in the agenda packet where you have the specific duties, the responsibilities, how many other jobs in the county require a master's degree?
I don't believe there are any other jobs in the county that require, as part of the position, a master's degree.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't the county, or find this director?
Requires CPA.
Okay, okay.
Which means you're going to have a master's.
You're going to have a master's degree.
If you'd like to table the decision this evening and reconsider, at our next meeting, we can do that.
Yeah, but that's a little high, I think, for, especially if it was at, you said sixty-five with the one time.
Right, well, and that's.
Sixty-five, and then jump to eighty-five, now I'm thinking that's.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, excuse me.
Sixteen thousand more.
Well, with seventy-four, it's five thousand more, six thousand more.
I mean, yeah, I have a concern with the starting salary, other than that, yes.
And, and I, I do know, you know, that, you know, even in the school system, the librarians are required to have a master's, and their pay is nowhere near this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this until the next meeting.
I second it.
We have a motion to continue, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I, I do have a question, and if we're going to table it, are we going to try to get, do some research to see what other area, can we, can we get some information?
I can share some additional information, yes.
So what other types of librarian directors get in certain areas?
Well, that, that is how we, we came to that, that salary.
Well, I'd like to see some of that if I could, then.
And also, the other local counties that were a part of the Earl, if we could see what they're doing.
Sure, so I, I do have a salary for Pasquotank, but, and I think for Dare, Camden County has not established their salary yet.
What are their salaries?
Pasquotank, I believe, starting is seventy-five, and Dare is eighty-two.
Okay.
And did you say that there, that some, some percentage of that is coming from the state, or is it all county funds?
It will, when we are able to apply for state aid, yes, it will come directly to the county, and then currently, Earl will pay up to the amount that they currently pay.
The sixty-five thousand, so we would be on the hook for the.
For the one year.
For, yeah.
For the rest of this calendar year.
But beyond, beyond that, how, how is it, how is it funded?
It'll be on our backs.
It, it would, we would receive the state aid, but I, I can get back to you on the amount.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item eleven is board appointments, is senior citizen advisory, it's my appointment, I'm going to ask that we continue that, I'm not prepared to make that decision tonight, and also, I believe Commissioner Breathwaite is going to have an appointment to the senior citizen advisory board as well, so we can both, if you're prepared tonight, you can.
You can board for yes, man.
No, that's, that's later. This is the senior citizen advisory board, there's two vacancies, one is my appointment, and one is your appointment, I'm not prepared tonight.
I'm not prepared.
So we'll continue it to the next agenda. That's my motion, is, any?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Item twelve is extension of memorandum of understanding between the county of Currituck and Pasquotank County for the acceptance of stray dogs, and I'll let the manager briefly explain that.
Sure, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, you all approved approximately two months ago for a memorandum of understanding with Pasquotank County to accept stray dogs, up to three dogs per week for a period of sixty days, so we have come to the end of that term, and Pasquotank has requested that, that, that term be extended by thirty days through December first, they anticipate that they will be able to utilize their shelter for animal control from that date forward, and so they have requested your consideration of that this evening.
So I asked the county manager if it is creating any issues for our animal shelter, and it is not, so it's just helping out a fellow county that's going through a rough patch right now, which I feel like they would do the same for us if we needed the help, so.
And we do bill them for services like food and stuff, and they.
We are billing them for, let's see, for vaccines, and, just jumped off the top of my head, there, there's a.
Daily amount for food.
Yeah, just so it's not coming out of our tax, but we are getting some reimbursement for helping.
That's correct, and then if the dog is not reclaimed, then we are able to adopt the dog out, and we do receive the adoption fee for that animal.
All right, any other questions?
And I would suggest, in your motion, to delegate authority to the county manager to sign any documentation that's necessary for that extension.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend the memorandum of agreement between us and Pasquotank County regarding stray dogs by thirty days, and designate the county manager the authority to sign whatever documentation is required.
Have a motion for approval, we have a second, second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item thirteen is consent agenda.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion for approval, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Commissioners report, we'll start with you, Ms. Rose.
Okay, so today I began volunteering in the Meals on Wheels program. Thank you, Ms. Jarvis, for encouraging me to do that, and while I was at the senior center, I saw lots of activity going on, you know, just people communicating with one another, having coffee, they were getting ready to play bingo, it was just a happy place, and about ten days ago, I guess, also at social, at that, not at Social Services, goodness, the senior center, they had an information health day, and there was probably about twenty different booths set up, the Sheriff's Department was there, telling people how to safely dispose of medications, Fire and EMS was there, taking blood pressure, the, it was just, it was really an informative event, and there was a long line of people going around the whole day that I was there, so that was a great thing for our people. I'd like to remind everybody again that Social Services is trying to get citizens to sponsor children to provide a Christmas, so please call the Social Services Department, press zero, and you will get someone immediately. We had about six hundred and fifteen people, I believe, last year, children that were served that needed help with Christmas. Let's see, I was happy to hear that the Knott's Island Ferry problem has been solved, but we still need to keep an eye on it, I don't think we're going to lose the service there. This Friday, I have reserved the county library at Barco for a meeting with local commercial fishermen, if any of you would like to join us, please come, so that we can talk about what's getting ready to happen. Flags, I'd like to add flags at government buildings to our agenda for the next meeting, if possible.
It could be in our meeting.
And, one more thing, I want to say congratulations to the Currituck County High School Football Team, they are sharing the conference championship, so I think they'll be playing at home, not this Friday, but next Friday.
Janet, what time was your meeting on Friday?
Six o'clock, six o'clock. So I'd love to have you.
Good.
And I am.
Our meeting runs.
It's what?
Depends on how long our meeting at COA runs, but I'll try.
Okay, and when I go to Morehead Wednesday, it's a one-day trip this time, if you want to join me and go to the Coalition, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday, Meals on Wheels, sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Payment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, just one thing I want to talk about is our food pantries in the county, as you were well aware, with everything going on in the federal government now, you know, our food pantries are, are getting extra work out, and if you can provide any, I talked to an individual right there, any, any help that you can provide, drop off, they could use it because they are going to be seeing, until this federal situation is done, more and more people are going to be going to them. And also, there's a lady, Rose Grandy, on Poplar Branch Road.
I saw that.
Yeah, she has, in front, on the road, she has a little building in front, and she has started her own food pantry, so if you can go by there, you'll see it, it's a little wooden building, it's open, it's a, serve yourself food, food pantry, you can donate, go in and help stock it, but anything we can do just to kind of help our community out, just remember those in need, especially with the holidays coming up, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis.
First of all, I want to say congratulations to Troy Breathwaite for his appointment, we look forward to your time with us, you are a very impressive man, and we are lucky to have you, so thank you for being willing to put your name out there. I also want to give a shout out to Justin Marsigley, Danielle Lloyd, Stephen Harris, and Alexa Miller, the ambulance and EMS crews that joined us at trunk or treat at Mount Zion, United Methodist Church, and Grandy, they showed up with candy and had their lights flashing, which brought even more children to the trunk or treat event, they're enthusiastic, their service was incredible, and I just appreciate their willingness to come and share that evening with us. I also want to say congratulations to Renee Doughty, I think she might have left, on her appointment to the College of the Albemarle Board of Trustees, she will be sworn in next month, and we are very thrilled to have another member from Currituck County to serve on that twenty-six-member board, every voice is important, but when we can advocate for Currituck County, great things happen here. And finally, I do want to tell everyone that we are having our initial recovery court discussion, it will be at our opioid advisory board, which is on November thirteenth, it will be at three o'clock here in this room, and we will hear from Judge Trevette, who is going to help us and guide us and preside over the program, which is a diversion program that will help those people with substance use disorder who've come into contact with law enforcement, a way to help them recover and to divert them from a life of crime, so I look forward to that and very excited, and, and finally, I'll just go with what Janet said, and Commissioner Payment, too, there are a lot of people with a lot of uncertainty and food insecurity, Operation Santa, there's a QR code, there's a link, there's so many ways to give to that program to help children at Christmas, and of course, the many food pantries, they're not going to turn anything away, so if you can help, please help, and that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Breathwaite.
Oh, you're skipping over to me, all right. Well, I don't have.
Put you on your toes.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to share, but very happy to be here, as I mentioned before, looking forward to working with this fine body of folks, always enjoy being around intelligent and thoughtful folks, and so just looking forward to contributing to the dialogue and the decision-making, and then I also wanted to give a shout out to the Currituck County Historical Society, so I don't know how much you all are into that sort of thing, I am the, the family historian and the genealogist for both sides of my family, and have some long roots in this part of the world, going back to the sixteen hundreds on my father's side, so you can learn a lot at the Historical Society meetings, so I intend to make my presence over there and, and share some, some history of the area and learn, learn some things as well, very rich history in this area, and something we should all be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. McCord.
I'd like to congratulate Dr. Lutz on that presentation that they had, don't believe everything you read on social media, Currituck County has excellent schools, we're ranked ninth out of one hundred and fifteen, I like hearing positive things, they do a great job. The Christmas parade is December fifth, so if you want to be in the Christmas parade or have a float in the Christmas parade, it is, every year it's grown, it's almost gotten too big, you can email my county email, you can find it, it is my, it's on the flyer, with the Sheriff's Office and our FOP, as well as with the extension, Cameron and her people, the Christmas parade is always a success, and like I said, if you want to sign up, I mean, I've let people sign up as much as the last day, but we put like a cutoff, but feel free to look at the flyer, reach out, I got a good email today about somebody with a, a car, we've never had that type of car, so it's pretty cool, so it's, it's always something new, but that's about it, and like I said, if you can donate, please donate, I know there's tons of stuff that need it, and I'd like to thank the Mayak Women's Club, I know Commissioner Rose is a member of that, they're helping with some different stuff through some different nonprofit programs through the county that they're helping out with, and I'd like to thank them for all that they are assisting in doing, because there's some changes coming up in 2026, but that's it for me.
Get the BOC float on there.
Yeah, I know, I don't know, maybe.
We wanted a closed one this year.
There's no eggs.
Yeah, Mr. Angel.
So, in light of more houses falling in Buckston, the Buckston Civics Association has pushed residents of the state to lobby the governor's office and the legislature for changes, Senator Bobby Hannig requested that Stein declare a state of emergency down that way, a couple weeks back, I went over to Corolla and toward the beach, we've got some houses that aren't, that aren't going to be far behind, there's some stuff that's, you know, prior to CAMA regulations, built in not the most ideal location for, withstanding beach erosion, and I, I think this board should look at, you know, joining that calls and lobbying the state as well. Yesterday, or no? Yep, yesterday, yesterday I went over to the North Beach Preservation Alliance meeting, where we had a really good group of people from multiple organizations, everybody from, Ness was there, and Twitty was there, and the main focus of topic was access control, and how to, how to limit some of the traffic going up and down the beach over there, just to preserve the, the environment, reduce the, the stress on the, the local community and the roads back there that are not state maintained, they are maintained through different funding mechanisms, but it does help with that, so, did that, and then, just, you know, I, I saw there was an article wrote about the electoral districts, the work session, and it was kind of, it was, it was written from a matter of which we were pushing things, this is something that a lot of us have been asked about, so for everybody out there to educate, you know, the public, whatever map that we decide to go with, there will be public hearings, there'll be public comment, there'll be public input, and then ultimately, the vote will be a referendum on a ballot, if the citizens want this to happen or not, this is not a, a thing that the Board of Commissioners can vote on and magically make happen, so rest assured, you know, if, if the majority of the people of Currituck County do not want this changed, then it won't happen, if the majority of them want this change, it will happen, so, that's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. First thing I'd like to do is recognize the loss in the community, former Sheriff's Department, Mr. Jimmy Spencer, had been on the department for. the department for I don't even know how many years, Kevin, but.
Our chief deputy has his unit number, so he was the former two oh four. So he's been gone for twenty-seven years from the agency?
Yeah, but he was a fixture for many years here in the community. Um, he passed away, uh, Sunday, I believe, kind of unexpectedly, but I don't, I don't really know. But anyways, he passed away, and we need to recognize the loss in the community. Um, I attended the senior, I'm on the senior citizen advisory board. I don't know why. I'm the youngest one up here, but somehow I got put on the senior citizen advisory board, and they keep reminding me that I can come out there and participate.
You need to.
And so anyways, we had our quarterly meeting. They're very active and, uh, doing things at Knott's Island, doing some repairs over there and Lower Currituck. And, uh, here at Barco, we have a tremendous, tremendous facility there.
Yeah.
That could be utilized so much more by some of our seniors, um, if they would participate. And also, we're doing a little bit of outreach over on the Outer Banks and doing, I think yoga is the big thing we're doing over there. Uh, taking off on some of Commissioner Angel's comments about the houses, I also went over there and walked the beach, and it was a nor'easter blowing about fifty miles an hour, and, uh, the surf was angry that day. But, um, I've done some research since then, and they had a similar problem, problem down in north, um, em, uh, not Emerald Isle, but, uh, oh, it escapes me now.
Spitzville Beach here?
Topsail, North Topsail Beach. They had an erosion problem down there many, many, many years ago. And what they did was they started putting those big sandbags.
Ah.
And they are, they are gosh-awful ugly when they put them out there. But those sandbags create a break. And what happens is, is the beach grows over those sandbags and creates a new dune. It didn't bring the beach back, but it's put an impenetrable dune out there and saved those, um, uh, it was a couple of hotels out there. And when we get a bad storm like we got now, the sandbags are still there. The dune may wash partial away or whatever, but then it replenishes again. And they have a, a rigorous, um, grass planting and, um, uh, sand fence, um, program that they're doing. And they've kind of gotten ahead of it to where it's more like a maintenance thing instead of an emergency thing. So this board can look at some other things, and I believe CAMA will permit if a private homeowner over on the Outer Banks wants to do that themselves. What we need to do is maybe find out what the process is and make it easy for folks to know how to go out and, and put those sandbags in and rebuild their dunes while we're waiting for our study to come back. And that may be another option that we need to look at, at some of those, uh, distressed areas, is putting those sandbags out to rebuild the dunes because they don't wash away. Um, the other thing, and, and the last thing I have, is I've been speaking with, uh, different folks in Raleigh about us being a tier-three county. And they are looking at that. But one of the things that I asked, uh, Representative Hannig, I said, would it be helpful if maybe we scheduled an appointment with the House Speaker and the Senate Majority Leader to make it personal and let them actually hear from a county that's being affected from this, uh, tier ranking system? It's just totally, absolutely unfair for Currituck to be ranked the same as Charlotte Mecklenburg and Wake County. So we get zero, and I mean, folks at home, zero funds from the state. Camden County got money to build a whole new high school.
As did Chawan.
As did Chawan. I went over to my mother-in-law's house this past weekend, and in Washington County, they were given full funds to build a elementary school, a middle school, and a high school from the state because they're not a tier-three county. So.
You can get a parking.
All of that, all of that burden is placed on our citizens and taxpayers when they're giving money away like candy to every other county in the state. So what I would like is for the board to concur, for the manager to try to set appointments in Raleigh or, or Greenville, or, or wherever, to have those discussions with the leadership in the House and the Senate, not the rank and file. Of course, we will want, uh, Representative Goodwin and Senator Hannig to accompany and, accompany us. But I think if we could show them on paper, the way the county is cut up in so many different ways, and how we have to, uh, essentially create another government over on the Outer Banks and, and here, and maybe appeal to their, uh, good graces that maybe we could move this process forward, because all they're doing is talking about it. We're gonna study it. But the leadership can make this happen.
Yep.
They are the people that can say, make it happen. And if we make our case, there's a possibility that they can make it happen. So I would like for the board to concur, to instruct the manager to try to set up those meetings, um, for us to go.
I concur.
I'm good.
Okay. And that is, yes, sir?
Uh, for those of you that knew Sue Austin, uh, she passed away Saturday, I believe, in Florida. Her and her husband had moved from Currituck, um, to be closer to their, their daughter. Uh, Sue was a longtime, or she, lifelong member of, you know, the Knott's Island Ruined Club since it was stood up. Her and her husband were two of the founding members on that.
Yep.
Great loss to the community, so.
Yep. All right. Uh, without further ado, county managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, today we were made aware that some citizens are receiving telephone calls, um, from people who are asking about the quality of their water. So we just wanted to make sure that the, the public knows that we are not conducting a survey on water quality that is not Currituck County. Um, and if anyone has any questions, they can contact the customer service office at two three two two seven six nine. Um, also, last year, you all approved for, excuse me, a, a bonus day, eight hours of, of leave in lieu of the holiday luncheon. And I would like to request that again this year. Um, so if you all are in, uh, in agreement with that, we can move forward with that.
Did she say two, two bonus days? I couldn't hear what you said.
What, what is this for?
Good try, Kevin.
So last year, the, the board approved offering, uh, a bonus day. It was essentially eight hours of vacation leave in lieu of the holiday luncheon. Um, and so I'd like to request that again this year.
So they have the option either or?
No, there, there is no holiday luncheon.
Everybody liked it.
Correct, right.
It was.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, it would probably be in our best interest.
Can I vote on that, or would that be a conflict of interest, Madam Attorney?
You're gonna be working anyway.
I'll probably have to work anyway regardless, so it doesn't matter.
I, I think that is a nice thing that you do, and I understand the reasoning. A lot of folks were taken off, and they weren't there anyway. But that was the, the, probably the one time of the year that the commissioners were able to go and meet with the employees and show their appreciation. So if you have any little get-together with cookies or anything, you know, please let us know so we can go and wish them a happy holiday.
Is this for Thanksgiving or Christmas?
For Christmas.
For Christmas.
You, you were gonna comment on Kevin?
Yeah, I think there probably would be a conflict there in that vote, since you would be receiving that bonus day.
Kevin?
I can go home?
Second.
On, for voting on this.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant eight hours of leave in lieu of a holiday luncheon, um, for our staff.
Have a motion for approval. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right.
Thank you. Um, also wanted to offer a reminder that administrative offices will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, in observance of Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Also want to share that the Grandy Convenience Site will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, and Wednesday, November twelfth, for, uh, site improvements. The site will reopen on the thirteenth, uh, with a temporary gravel driveway. And then, uh, we will lay asphalt, weather depending on Tues. I'm sorry.
I'm tired. Let me interrupt your head.
It's okay. Um, so weather dependent on the morning of Tuesday, November eighteenth. And the goal would be to reopen at, um, one PM as usual.
You're talking about asphalt from the highway or one fifty, two?
To the gate.
That, that, and they're gonna widen and refit.
That's correct.
Perfect. Oh, my goodness. I've been waiting for that for years.
Yeah. She won't tell you this, but every time I go in there, I call her and tell her, all right, I'm, I'm putting it in four-wheel drive and going in the trash dump.
I, I send her texts and pictures, so.
It's like another mud bog.
All right, continue.
We're excited. Um, and offer to, uh, to, you know, comment on, on your, um, requests for participation with food drives. We are working with the Food Bank of the Alamo Hall to sponsor a virtual food drive that would benefit, um, the citizens of the county. And so once we have that set up, we'll share it with you all and, and make that public. Uh, it's an opportunity to provide donations.
Okay.
Monetary donations.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
One more thing about food pantries and blessing boxes. There are probably eight or ten blessing boxes throughout the county. I know there's one at Barco at, uh, oh, the thrift store. And I know there's one at Crawford Fire Department. Uh, you know, there's one at Wedgewood. They're, they're all over. There's one at Knott's Island. So it's not, we, we shouldn't just ask for people to help stock them. I mean, that is important, but we have lots of people in need that, they're there for them. If they, if they need it, go and get something.
Is that, do we have, uh, I, I know that we've got a whole bunch of those in the food pantries and the, the churches that run food pantries and stuff like that. Do we have anything on the county's website about, you know?
Locations?
Yeah, the locations.
We do. Uh, not in, for blessing boxes, but we do have information about, uh, different food pantries.
It wouldn't be a terrible idea to kind of post some of that stuff on, you know, on the county Facebook page or something like that. If, uh, right now, people with, with what's going on with federal government, as Commissioner Payment was saying, it wouldn't be a bad idea.
And the holidays coming.
Yeah, it would be, I, I think it would be a good idea to.
And I, I noticed today at the senior center, they had a box and were asking senior citizens if they'd like to contribute. Uh, they were bringing food, non-perishable items, to help stock something.
I can hear there, adds up.
Yep. And the YMCA at one point was doing a food pantry once a month. I believe they still are. And.
That's correct.
There was a lot of participation in that.
Actually, the, the pastor tonight, Powell's Point, uh, Baptist Church does a big, but yeah.
I know, I know Knott's Island Methodist Church has got one.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, right. They're all over the place. You're right.
So, can, continue?
That's it for me.
One last thing.
Yes.
Um, we have discussed, uh, I don't know, I've talked with one or two commissioners about instituting a county service recognition, much like you receive for your, was it fifteen years?
Yes.
Maybe every five years, uh, do it, uh, once every six months, whenever someone has a five-year anniversary, in five-year increments. Present them a nice plaque and a thank you and a public recognition for their service to the county. It gives an opportunity to say thank you, and it also gives an opportunity for the, uh, citizens of the county to see who's working for them.
And if not a plaque, maybe a pin, you know?
We, we do pins and certificates.
We do pins, yes.
And certificates. They can wear the bin.
Come see us.
We'll see. We'll ask.
We could still present it.
Yes, sir.
One question, last question, Academy, as regarding the, um, convenience site. Are we gonna be putting notices or big signs somewhere so people can s, know that's gonna be closed?
Yes.
We signed you up for, to work.
Well, because if not, Paul's gonna be getting tons of phone calls. I don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
I'm gonna direct them to you.
I'm just telling Paul their commissioner from that area.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, county attorney?
No report.
You gave the best report of anybody tonight. Okay, our next item is a closed session. And county attorney, do I need to read every bit of this?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. We're going to.
Unfortunately.
Need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three to consult with the county attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege. NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen point one A three to preserve the county attorney-client privilege in the matters entitled Costanza versus Currituck County, Oxy Tax Litigation, Outer Banks Ventures, Inc. versus Currituck County, Whalehead Property Owners Association versus Currituck County, NCB Land Development, Mancuso Development, Inc. versus Currituck County, County of Currituck versus Coastal Incorporated, County of Currituck versus Rodney Wayne Taylor, County of Currituck versus Lane and Tillot, and County of Currituck versus Myra Fraser. Then we need to go under NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five to establish or instruct the county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase or exchange to be used for any public purpose, purpose. The property is owned by Carova Sands LLC and West Beach Properties LLC, made up of five parcels totaling plus or minus forty-three point four-two acres. Parcels are located on Ocean Pearl Road, Corolla, pin number one one three A zero 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 one three zero zero zero. One three A zero 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 one two B zero 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 zero, one three A zero 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 one two A zero 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 zero. Zero one zero two zero 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 two one zero 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 zero, and zero one zero two zero 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 two zero 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 zero.
Man.
Good job. Did he, did he, did he forget a six, seven, or something there?
No, we're, somebody, make that your motion. I meant, that's my motions.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.